Or you guys can just take me there. Or that's marvelous to work or something.
Well, I'm south facing.
What about Brian?
I'm glad we have fun.
Oh, you know, I was thinking.
I don't know. We appointed you by.
You're going to be a white hole.
I wish that worked.
Mr. Hough?
I just come over and like.
Hello?
This is Debbie. You're all ready to start.
I don't see a quorum, Debbie.
Um.
We're kind of.
All of us are connecting. We're connecting. They're connecting.
There you are.
Do we have a quorum, Debbie?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I'd like to call the public safety meeting to order. Like to somebody make a motion to accept the past minutes. Move by Dave. Is there a second? Matt, anybody have any discussion? Anybody have any discussion about the minutes? Call the roll, Debbie. Or how you want to do it, raise your hands. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Any opposed? First order of business is alternative sentencing use. Mike Gray.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you. I would, I'll be brief. I have one request and that's permission to apply for the community of practice grant through DCJS. It's an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. It's competitive grant and this is, we were successful in the first two rounds of securing funding, but we did it with a regional from Warren County. I'd like to do that again. Right now, as we speak, there's a bidders conference going on for this grant. I have someone else covering that for me right now. But some of the things I would look at using utilizing the funding for is possibly mentoring, matching big brothers, big sisters, bigs with some of our at-risk youth. Offsetting county share with purchasing drug, the book list we use for competency development. And I'm, at this point, I have to wait to see what the criteria is around the funding, but I, it's a good opportunity for us and I would like permission to partner with Warren County to do that, to apply for.
All right, Mike. This is just to apply for the grant. If the grant is awarded, you would have to then come back to this committee?
Yes, absolutely. The grant policy requires me to ask permission upfront and this, this is a hundred percent state funding. There's no local match required.
All right, anybody on the committee like to make a motion to allow Mike to apply for this grant? I have Dave and Sue. And Dana, is there a second? I'll be the second. Is there any more discussion for this? All in favor, please raise your hand.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, go ahead. Good luck, Mike. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next is public defender. Mike McCure is requesting to be reappointed as public defender for another two-year term. Anybody like to make a motion to appoint Mike as a public defender? Motion by Dana. Is there a second? Second by Sue. Discussion, Mike, do you want to give us a stump speech?
Um, I will spare you. I appreciate it very much.
Maybe at the board of supervisors meeting, you'll bless us with a stump speech.
Yes.
All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand.
All right.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mike. You're moving on to the next round.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else for the committee, Mike?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right, it's gonna be a very quick meeting. Assigned counsel, this is on the agenda, but it's on the agenda inappropriately. It's because the reappointment of Mr. Tom Coffey is not made by this committee, so we'll take that off the agenda, but is Mike here or is Tom here? Does he have anything to say for the committee?
I just heard the opportunity to.
Do you have anything else for us, Tom?
No, no.
All right, winging right along. Corners? Is Bob here for corners?
So, um, we have a new agreement for the morgue services with Glen Falls Hospital for the upcoming year. It's kind of a seller's market. We've had frequent discussions about morgue services and where to get them. It's the closest, least expensive one. It's in the budget for next year, so we just need to do a resolution to sign the agreement with Glen Falls. And way, right, and way into procurement because it's sole source.
Don't move.
Who said that?
Joe Bryan.
All right, thank you, Dave. Anybody want, which the second? Dana Hogan? Any more discussion for Roger? Everyone in favor, please. I'm sorry, Roger.
I'm hoping not to use the services in the upcoming year.
Everyone in favor, indicate by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is passed. Probation. Dan Boucher, are you, are you here?
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to just talk briefly about our radios. We put a request in to have radios purchased out of some transferred funds. I'm pleased to say that I worked with Tim Hardy at Public Safety. He has been able to acquire some radios that are, that are perfectly good and they're from another, other law enforcement agency that would suit our purpose. So I, I would like to talk to the committee about not purchasing them, using the radios the public safety has acquired for us. That would not make us spend the, the nine thousand dollars that I was originally anticipating. I would like to possibly use up to two thousand dollars to purchase backup batteries only to extend the life of these and go from there. I think it's a good opportunity for us to use something another department doesn't need at this time or upgraded to. And I, I personally think after talking to Tim that investing the nine thousand dollars at this time probably isn't the best decision based on the quality of, of what he's giving me. That's the first topic I'd like to talk about.
All right, are you asking for us to make a motion to authorize that?
I, I think I am just because I, I asked for the budget transfer to specifically purchase the radios. I think it would be proper for me to at least tell you that I'm planning to not purchase the radios and, and only to buy backup batteries for, for existing radios that I can acquire.
All right, so how, Debbie, how is that going to materialize? Will there be a budget amendment at the board of supervisors meeting or does this committee have to give the blessing?
Hold on one second, Dana.
Anybody know that answer?
Debbie, second, Dan. If the resolution is going through Friday, we can just be pulled. Or tables or whatever.
Does the amount need to be changed? Are we still, we're just transferring a lesser amount for the batteries or we're just?
We're done last night. Right. So, Dan, would you need some of that money back out of the point two to buy the batteries, just back into your point four?
Um, yeah, I would need up to two thousand dollars.
So we need another budget amendment, put it back in the point four. So to be clear, we moved nine thousand dollars from four to two, but we're gonna, now we're gonna move.
Now from one.
Wait.
From one.
Personal services to equipment.
And it's, I think it would.
You don't need nine thousand. We only need two thousand.
And I think it should stay in equipment. Based on the dollar amount, I think it still has to stay in equipment.
The batteries, the batteries are more than five hundred dollars a piece, Dan?
No, they're not. I was saying the total for all of them would be up to two thousand, so.
No, the batteries, if the battery is under five hundred, it's still a point four.
Is Tim, is Tim Hardy on this? In this call?
Yeah, I'm here, guys. No, the batteries are not over five hundred dollars a piece, so they can go to a point four.
Okay.
So do we need to move from here to the finance of the board or we can do it on Friday or do it at the next meeting? It moves us to finance, right? This, this change we're talking about. I don't know that we should run. Why don't you let me work with Dan and, and we'll get back because I don't think there's any urgency to. Let me work with Dan, see what we actually need to bring to finance next month. Because if it's a simple point four to point four transfer, we said there's other, that's another discussion. Gotcha.
All right, Dan, so you're willing to hold off a little bit so that you and Al can figure this out?
Yeah, I think we can figure it out just in a few minute conversation.
Yep.
Okay, what's your next item, Dan?
Uh, next item is training. Every year, or every new employee at our department has to attend multiple weeks of training in probation of fundamentals, practice, peace officer training, firearms certification, various things that are required by law. We were just informed by the state director of probation that they will be expanding this. The municipal police training council has reviewed the requirements that OPCA currently has for probation and they feel that they're deficient and actually providing proper training aligns to peace officer certification that they've put down. So they did a side-by-side comparison of every content area and found that they're deficient by several hours. They're going to increase it by at least one hundred and sixteen hours of training. So we're trying to figure out exactly where that's going to land and how we can combine our existing training into that and where this is going to be offered because I believe they do not want OPCA providing peace officer training anymore to us. And we may be cooperating with our local sheriff's department or heading to Zone Five Academy down in Schenectady to do our peace officer portion. We do a lot of our training locally anyways with the sheriff's department. It works out pretty good. In years past, we've had our own firearms instructor in house, so we can share some of the, the cost and the man-hours. And I just got off the phone with the jails training coordinator, Chelsea Little, just to discuss how we can continue to do that in the future. And I, and I think that we'll probably try to stay local, but if, for some reason, we do have to go to Zone Five Academy, they can charge a fee and that fee is something that we never had to put in the budget before. They didn't tell us before our budget process here, so it wouldn't be in our, in our, our budget. There are prices around the state that are all over the place per attendee. There are some that are, you know, free and some that are charging up to two thousand dollars per participant. So based on that, I would prefer to stay local and do something in conjunction with our own sheriff's department, but I will be reporting back on this probably at the next public safety committee meeting when I, when I get in for more information, but it's, it's something I should tell you ahead of time.
All right. Thank you for that information, Dan. Do you have anything else for the committee?
That's it.
Does the committee have any questions for Dan? All right, seeing none. Under other, the first one up, I see the sheriff is here and the sheriff is planning to request that the two deputy positions that he requested in the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two budget be approved and placed in the staffing pattern so that they can attend the training academy coming up the third week of January. So Sheriff Murphy, you want to expand on this?
Thank you. We're under a bit of a crunch with this situation because the academy is in January and we, we know that the positions are in the budget, but not yet in the staffing pattern, so respectfully request that the staffing pattern be amended after January first so that we can add these two deputies to the staffing pattern and also get them the equipment and, and all the stuff they need for the academy, which is, I think, the second or third week, or the third week, sorry, in, in January. So it's a bit of a time issue, timeliness.
Um, Matt, you're the chairman of the personnel committee. Do you have any ideas on this?
Yeah, let me throw this out, let me come out where I might go wrong. But if we pass this out of here today, move it to personnel, which is next Tuesday, we approve it in personnel, it would then go to the next fourth, which Jeff, that would give you time to get them uniformed and get them their guns and get all, all set for the academy. Does that timetable work for you, Jeff?
Yes, it does. Yeah, it'll be, you know, it'll be crunch time, but we certainly can get it done. We understand the process.
How does that work for you, Melissa? Does that sound like a reasonable way to move forward?
Yeah, that, that sounds right.
So we'll just make a motion to add this to the staffing pattern, though we know it won't officially be amended until January third, but at least move, move it through the process so it gets done in time for, so I'll make that motion to add two deputies to the staffing pattern.
Second.
Is that Dave the second?
Yes, me.
All right.
I did have, I did have a question too.
All right, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, I think I saw an email that they can already start recruiting people and starting signing up. But could the sheriff start ordering equipment for them just in case that takes time to get some of this stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, we, we generally have, you know, a couple vacancies going at a time anyways. So we, we have equipment that we pass along, that kind of thing. But we certainly can order the necessary items for the academy. In this case, the recruits wouldn't need firearms, you know, until they get to the firearms portion of the, the academy, for instance, but we can certainly order the items that are required for the academy and, and smart clothing and whatnot and get that all started. So we appreciate the fact that we can move forward after the third.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, if I could just also clarify with the sheriff. So would this timetable allow you to do the psych exam sooner than later as well as the medical requirement? Or does it all work if they're ready to go?
Yes, they're actually doing their psychological test today, so that it takes a while to get those results back, so that's why we went forward with that, because it would remain on the list, you know, anyways, even if, if this didn't pass today. So we just, we started the process and we'll have everything ready to go by the third.
Any other discussion? Everyone in favor of sending this to personnel with our endorsement? Please indicate by raising your hand or saying yes.
Aye.
Any knows? Motion is passed. Thank you. Is there, are there any other items that need to be discussed today? Al?
Just to swing back around supervisor half, taking a look at the probation budget. It looks like he has done well on his carpool line this year and probably is going to be able to fund those batteries out of his carpool line, so it won't take any official board action.
All right, very good. Thank you. I have one question for, maybe Debbie would know this answer. This, I think this is the second public safety meeting in a row where we have not heard from code enforcement. Has code enforcement moved to a different subcommittee?
John, grab a line. Post is on.
John, do you have anything for the committee?
I do not currently. If anybody has any questions for me, I mean, I can give you an update on the computer software if you'd like.
Go ahead.
We've got the information, our database is down, been downloaded into their system. And actually later today, they're going to be giving me a demonstration on that. We have a weekly meeting where we're able to figure out the next steps and follow through on everything. It's moving smoothly. We're all looking forward to it very much here. And there's, that's about it for that, so.
John, at the last meeting, I had asked Joe Brilling from the sewer district if he had any information about septic systems. So I want to ask you, my question is, if you were to install a New York State engineered, approved wastewater treatment facility, not, not a septic tank, but a small wastewater treatment facility about the size of a septic tank, would you then be required to have an engineered plan like you do for a septic tank in Leach Field if it's already an approved engineered system?
It would all depend on what the size of the system is. If it's more than, if it's treating more than a thousand gallons a day, then that would be out of our jurisdiction anyway. Anything below that would come through our office. So if it's already been stamped by, by who were you saying on that? I didn't quite follow that.
Well, there, some of these systems are, they are engineered systems which are approved, already approved by New York State. So if you get a wastewater treatment system, not, not a facility, a system, say if you're, if you're in a village and your village lot is not large enough, you have a septic in Leach Field or if you're near a body of water where you can't have a septic system in Leach Field, but you opt for a wastewater treatment system that is already engineered and approved by New York State, are you then required to have that whole system engineered, which currently you have to. If you're going to put in a septic tank in Leach Field now, that has to be designed by an engineer. I think it's a little redundant. So my question is, if it's under a thousand gallons, are you required to do that redundancy?
Well, it wouldn't really be redundant. We would be using the same plans to go by. So if somebody had a system that they wanted to put in and say they couldn't reach proper, proper separation distances, we would tell them, we'd help them fill out the paperwork and send it to Department Health. If Department of Health signed off on it, then we would be good with it.
Oh, that, that's good.
They shouldn't be going to DOH first. They should all be coming through us first and then we would work with them to get whatever approvals they can get from DOH and then we'd move forward from there.
All right, that's good news because in that case, it probably would save the, the homeowner about three thousand dollars if they don't have to have a professional engineer stamp the plan if this is already an engineered approved system.
Correct.
All right, so we just have to, does your office maintain a list of which vendors are already approved by New York State? Which make, which makers of these septic wastewater treatment systems?
I'm guessing there's some sort of disconnect between what you're saying with the wastewater treatment systems, because the system would be the entire it would be a septic tank or an enhanced treatment unit or like Elgin laterals are not not following, because you can have components from different contractor, or not contractors, manufacturers, but those components are all part of a system. So those would all have to be specifically approved for the site that they're going to. There's no out-of-the-box system that's been approved for every site. It would still have to be engineered for that site. And then if there's anything required, it would go to DOH after that. So there's not like a out-of-the-box, this fits every scenario kind of thing. So each property has to have engineered drawings. But they use those components as part of their system, which is reviewed and stamped by that engineer.
So this is not good news. Just to be clear, just to be clear, if I had a lot and I'm, say, within a hundred feet of a body of water or an old village lot that's very small and I want to put in an engineered wastewater treatment system that's already engineered. I'm not saying go out and find an engineer locally to plan where my engineered system is going. I have to have an engineer plan where my engineered system is going? That, that's overregulation, I think.
The state requires every site to be individually evaluated by an engineer so that whatever system they're putting in there is for that site. So I, I guess engineered systems, do you have an example of one that you're talking about?
Well, the one I've been, been looking at is our Norwiko systems and the five hundred gallon, six hundred gallon or seven hundred fifty gallons, so the runner meet the thousand gallons.
Okay.
So if you were to go out and purchase a Norwiko system, I would then have to go out and get a local engineer or some engineer and pay that person three thousand dollars to tell me that I can put in an engineered wastewater treatment system.
I can look into that specific brand itself. I'm unaware of any system that just has a blanket. Go ahead and then put it wherever you want.
Well, if it's a wastewater treatment system, the effluent coming out can go right into the environment. It's already treated. That's what a wastewater treatment, it's treated. So I don't, I don't quite understand, but again, this is New York State. You know, this is endemic in New York State, but I, I think if you have to then go out and hire an engineer to put his stamp on where you're going to put an engineered system is, is too much.
Those systems, you know, they're approved to be used in certain scenarios. Again, I don't think there's any blanket statement, any blanket licensing or certification or anything like that where it can go wherever. You still have to look at the site itself, make sure you have the proper clearances that the state requires away from water, away from wells, away from the neighboring wells, all of that kind of stuff. I mean, there, there's no system out there that provides completely. There's some that claim that you can drink out of them. But there's nothing in the state laws that I'm aware of yet where it says that those systems don't have to meet all of those same requirements, which again, it's like specific. But I mean, you can, you want to email me over the, the name on that again or any information you have on it, I can check on it, reach out to the state. That's something I'm not aware of, so.
Matt Hicks?
Yeah, Dana, I, I can tell you from, for instance, from our water system, there are two types of water coming in. There's, there's surface water and groundwater under service conditions that have to be treated with UV lights and, and through filters as opposed to well water. The New York State now is going to have effluent have to be treated through UV lights before it can be discharged. So the village, we've been working with the village on some grant programs that their discharge now, effluent, has to be run through UV lights prior to being discharged. These new and matter-of-fact regulations are coming in now. So if you've got a pre-engineered system, they may be required, just like the villages, to have the effluent treated with UV light. So the regulations are changing dramatically. So watch when you get into these pre-engineered systems to think that the effluent can just go right to the environment. That may not be the case going forward.
But Matt, wastewater treatment means the water is treated through bubblers and UV light. It is treated, as you say.
Okay. It has, has UV light. That, that's a critical thing. I just want to make sure that was covered in your system, that's all.
That's the difference between a wastewater treatment system and a septic tank. These are treated.
Well, a septic tank would be a component of a wastewater treatment system. Sewage wastewater treatment system and sewage disposal system, there's kind of gray area overlapping those. That's why if you send me out the information now and I can look into it and I can reach out to DOH here in Glen Falls, if there's any specific questions on them.
All right. Thank you, John. I was a little surprised when I heard about this because I thought all you had to have was a perk test to put in a septic tank. I was surprised to find out that if you build a home and you want to put in a septic tank in Leach Field, you now have to pay an engineer to stamp a plan for you to put in your septic tank in Leach Field, even if you're nowhere near a body of water or anything and your soil will do a perk test. That's no longer all you have to do. You now have to jump through a hoop of paying an engineer to plan it, which I think is crazy.
Yeah, you're correct on that part. We used to be able to do it where a conventional system, where it was used to tank and a leach field, you didn't have to have stand planned. a leach field, you didn't have to have stamped plans on those. Those were only alternative systems that needed it, like a raised mound or something along those. But twenty sixteen, they switched that to where every system has to have stamped frames specific to that site.
All right, thank you.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Is there anything else for the committee before we adjourn? Seeing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you.